These mics work better.
Yeah.
Okay, we're live. As we're inviting Todd up. Um, okay, let's make this official. Good afternoon. It is Wednesday, September 21, 2016, 4:30 sharp in the afternoon. We'll begin our council meeting with a roll call, please.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Randy Funker.
Here.
Brad Hent.
Here.
Greg Gils.
Here.
Zach Sawyer.
Here.
Thank you, everyone. First on our agenda is public comments. Do we have any right now? No public comments? So we will move on to the consent agenda. Any questions, comments regarding the consent agenda?
Yes. I don't have the date in front of me, but I think it was our last council meeting minutes. It shows Pete and I as present, and then it shows us as absent.
It was the regular meeting of September 7?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, I will have to amend.
So I mean, we spaced out then?
You know, I, yeah, 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 yeah.
We were here, not really. Anyway, so that absent needs to be stricken out of those.
All right.
And I saw a little typo.
I may leave in this one.
The regular meeting.
No, no.
It's a unit T-hanger or is it unite?
No, it's unit.
Thank you. I mean, just simple typos. There's a unite instead of unit, but that's, that's all good.
Oh, yeah, it is. They're present and absent.
They're present and absent, yep. Thank you for pointing that out. Um, there's also a correction to the board minutes.
Okay.
I don't have a copy of that, but that 1010, the Board of Adjustment?
Yes.
They had a discussion about 1010 7th Street. We have it in as 1010 7th Avenue. So you want to amend the Board of Adjustment minutes for their last meeting? Because Steve Hollis, that's street, not avenue, so.
Okay.
Okay, not a biggie. Any other comments, questions, then, regarding the consent agenda? If we do not, do I have, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Last request? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Thank you. Going into new business, we have a consideration to amend a development agreement, and Kurt is going to bring us up to date with where that's at and what we need to do.
Thanks, Mayor.
Mm-hmm. Good afternoon, Council. Just, we need to amend a few numbers based on our development agreement with G and E Cabinetry that we had approved back on, on September 7. Per special provision in the memorandum of understanding on the lot that's located next to the Village Treasure Chest, the actual payback on that lot is $50,000 per acre. So based on that, what we're requesting the city forgive is $85,500 as part of the G and E project that was originally approved on September 7. This forgivable amount does still fit within our typical seven-year payback, and it's all based on our seven, or, excuse me, it's all based on our $400,000 middle and assessment agreement and contract for development with G and E. Essentially, what we need to do is just amend the numbers based on that memorandum to make them accurate. So, anybody has any questions, I'd certainly entertain those and for any clarification.
Now, this is the last lot that has that type of...
Yes, this was a unique, kind of a unique memorandum that was created when Hy-Vee in O'Brian County implemented, had that special provision to move, O'Brian County moved Hy-Vee in, and Hy-Vee has special restrictions on what can be developed and have restricted areas in there. So this memorandum was created specifically kind of for that, which makes it a unique type of deal. So, but to answer your question directly, right, it is. This is the last one. Everything else is pretty straightforward, based on how we do business.
The rest of the agreements we have in the future will be standard?
Standard, yes. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions, then?
I'll make the motion to approve the amendment.
That's okay. Support.
Any comments? Just making sure. All clear, all good? Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Gils.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Sawyer.
I wish to abstain at this time.
Funker.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Hey, when are they going to break ground? Are they going to start soon? I'm sorry, someone just asked me that, and I thought we...
They would like to get going soon. I know, we kind of got it, we met with them and marked it out last week, actually, the dimensions of the lot.
Right.
I think they're waiting on concrete.
Sure.
So they want to break ground yet this fall and get cranking on it as soon as possible. I think that their building is, I think it's ordered, so I think they're ready to rock the road.
Wonderful, because I thought you had shared that with us, but I wanted to clarify.
Yep, yep, that is true.
Okay, thank you. All right, Todd, you got that microphone ready?
You gonna read it all?
You should have just sat up here with us.
My eyes are still bleeding. Did you read it?
Um, considering the resolution of support for our wastewater facility plan, this, we need to approve this resolution to be able to go forward with our facility plan for the wastewater treatment, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a requirement from the DNR as part of our NPDDS permit.
Okay. So is a motion to approve the resolution approving the facility plan for the wastewater improvement project?
One thing I did want to point out, if you caught it in the back, where the cost options are. The, the last time we talked about this project, I believe, we shared a number of like 10.8 for the SBR.
Mm-hmm.
That has changed slightly. If you've seen in the back, it's 11.4 now.
Is that written in stone?
No.
No.
It's not.
Not with EPA.
Yeah. And it was actually changes brought up by staff, something that Dean and myself were talking about. We were initially intending on potentially leaving one of the buildings on site and leaving the belt press where it sits and having the office in a separate building. And there's a lot of inefficiencies there, and then we end up with two buildings to maintain, to heat and to cool. And so we asked what it would cost to add on a few square feet, move the belt press, and chop over to the new facility and have one new building instead of one new building and an old building. And we just think, long-term, that probably makes some sense if you're talking for over the next, you know, 30, 40 years, that we hope to use that facility.
At this point, it's just an estimate anyway, right?
That is very much correct. And it's a, and it's a rough estimate, Greg.
So it could go down.
It absolutely could go down.
How wishful thinking.
That was the joke of the day.
I hope it does now, because then I can rub it in a little bit.
Yeah.
Curiosity. What would happen if we just said, "No, we're not doing it"?
Um, yeah, we'd be fined. Um, I would assume they would jerk the license of our operators, which would then cause us more issues.
I'm sure.
Yeah, there's, there's no saying no, Pete.
I understand. Done that.
We'd be going to outhouses, yeah, probably. Okay. All right, any other discussion? And if not, is there a motion to approve by resolution? The support for the wastewater facility plan.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Last request for comments, questions? A roll call, please.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Thank you. Number five on our agenda is considering the pay request. Number two for Crossroads Pavilion. That is for the amount of $437,374.30. And with the rain last week, did we fall behind again? Are we doing well?
Yeah, I mean, until they get the thing completely enclosed, every...
Getting there.
Every time we get a monsoon, that makes a difference, yeah. But they're still within, within completion schedule.
Good to hear. Okay, do we have a motion to approve that pay request?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions?
Have they got the ground where they need it for compaction yet?
You talking about the parking lot?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I know it'll come up again here shortly.
Yeah, we'll go over that here in a minute.
We'll get to that one next. All right, any other, any questions regarding the pay request?
No.
Comments? Roll call, please.
Hent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
And then we have a change order on Crossroads Pavilion that was given to you as you came in here up at our desks. I see that's an amount of reduction of $101,479.74. And do you care to share with us how they came to that and how we were able to save?
Yeah, sure. Um, so, as soon as the project was bid, there were some items on there that we felt could potentially be value engineered. So between Scott and myself and the general contractor and the engineer, we've been talking through, and some of the subcontractors, we've been talking through potential areas of savings on the project. Um, so, one thing, let me get to it here. The dividing walls in the room, we changed the sound level or the amount of sound reduction that they would hold back from a level 60 to a level 55. We're told the hospitals only have 55, some of their privacy, and that was a reduction of over $68,000.
Wow.
We also changed the covering of those walls. The committee had selected a fabric that looked nice to put on there. By going with their standard covering, it still looks nice, in my opinion, it saved us another like $24,000. We changed how the stone was going to be applied to the exterior of the building, and that came across as about a $6,000 saving. So all, all told, we ended up with a reduction of $121,000. The reason the change order is only to the positive of 101, of course, we've had some additions as we went along here, too. We added an extra two rows of tile underneath the parking lot. We had issues with compaction, as Pete mentioned earlier. We are going to add some rock in some places. We added GeoGrid underneath the parking lot, basically just to stabilize the material. That was an addition of like $10,000. So all those things combined, we end up with a current net reduction of the 101, whatever it was, the 101 and change.
101,479,74. That's nice. Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of things I've got.
Sure. All I got was the amount that it's reduced by, so if we need additional, if you want additional information on that, I suppose we can get those copies from Todd if you'd like to see it or if there's...
Yeah, we have the complete breakdown.
Yeah.
Yes.
So if you want that, just ask them, Andrew, Todd, if you'd like a complete list of...
Do you have that like a PDF or something?
I can, yeah, I can.
Can you email it to us so we have it? Okay.
I have it in email, Andrew, we can just forward it out.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind just sending that out so we do have it and can read it in our downtime that we have.
I do want to make mention, on the, on the parking lot, so when we were struggling to meet compaction on that, the initial proposal we got from the general to alleviate that issue was a $76,000 addition. I was not in favor of that, the civil engineer was not in favor of that. So instead of doing everything at once, steps, and then continually checked on it until we made compaction, and by doing that, it saved us around $60,000.
Good deal.
Instead of just approving their initial proposal. So we are trying to take care of our money and not spend it if we don't need to.
Good.
But yet I want a parking lot that's going to last.
Right.
That'd be good.
Now, we have the issue out there with that street.
Yeah.
Caving in and...
Right.
We're going to put in a parking lot, we want that ground, and I'm surprised, didn't they notice that when they sampled that soil and everything?
So the majority of the soil testings were done up on the building pad and not in the parking lot. And they thought through excavating a foot of the dirt, drying it, rolling it back in, they thought they would meet it. And actually, it was meeting most of the densities, which historically that seems to happen in town, but the ground still is, it's spongy, it's kind of bucked. So when we would roll test it, the ground would like roll out in front of the trucks and then, and then heave back up, so it gets, it was really wavy. We initially thought it might have been a moisture problem, which is why I still think there's benefit to having the tiles under there, because it'll drain the lot better anyway and the, and keep the ground drier underneath the cement. But I was hoping to just put the tiles in, but when we dug the tiles in, there was no water. Well, what's next? And you kind of got to start from the bottom up, because once you cover it up with rock, there's not much you can do. The, the GeoGrid, I think, is going to be our biggest thing, is that stabilization map basically underneath that rock. It should move together instead of one piece moving and one piece not. That's where you really run into trouble, especially with like frost boils in the spring. And settling, the GeoGrid should keep everything on the plane as well.
It's popping over my head, so, thank you. Any other questions, comments, then, regarding our...
We approve the change order.
Support. Thank you. Last request for comments?
Which, which change order are we talking about? The $101,000? We're still on that one?
This is the only change order that we have.
All right.
In the amount of $101,479.74. No questions, comments? We're done? Okay, Matt?
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Thanks. Number seven on our agenda, considering the request for additional civil engineering services with RDG. The letter was given to you within your packet. Few options there that we can consider. I think, Todd, you've been in touch with Mike Bell?
Yeah, I spoke with Mike Bell and Brad Beck today. Essentially, where Mike is, they had, they're an architect, and they had contracted with a civil engineer to come on-site approximately once a month, basically when we're having our progress meetings, and they could do just via their office, approving submittals and that kind of sort of thing. The soil conditions not as good as what we would hope for. Brad was on-site, Brad Beck was on-site, much more than what he had anticipated. So the 5280 is basically him asking for compensation for the extra trips by the civil engineer. It's more than I would have anticipated. When I spoke with Brad today, I asked him what he had submitted to RDG as an estimate, and he said that it was all time and materials and that RDG had formed their own estimate. And he said, in his experience working with architects, when it comes to the civil side of a job, they, they have a bad habit of grossly underestimating what it's going to take for efforts to complete the civil side of things. They don't look or plan for any issues. So that's where the 5280 comes from. If you want to consider the 3,500, I don't, I don't believe you should just consider it. I think if anything, you should say that you'll do it on contract on an hourly basis, not to exceed 3,500. Because we, Beck has not incurred any, or incurred any of those costs yet. Those are costs that they're just making another assumption on as we pour. And they could change, depending upon how good of a job the contractor is doing with making sure their grades are right and forms are right, on what level of inspection that we want Beck to continue with as they move forward. Working with a contractor that I'm not familiar with, I think it's beneficial to us in the beginning to have a little higher level of inspection, and then if things are going well, we can, we can back it off after that. And RDG is claiming that that's not in their scope of services.
Now, we did the first civilian engineering out there, didn't we have a contract with Beck themselves?
No, we have never been under contract with Beck. The only thing Beck we've been under contract with was for the design of the trail around the, around the barrel pit.
Okay.
But on this job itself, we are not currently under contract with Beck.
So then are these, that 5280, is that, how much has RDG inflated that price?
I don't think any. I think that it's, it's based on his amount of trips and hours on-site and X amount of hours.
Can he get an itemized...
Yeah, Greg actually asked for one today, and I'll let you go if you want, Greg.
He had a total of 12 trips from the period July 18 through September 14, averaging $440 a trip. Three hours, four hours, three and a half hours. It includes two hours of travel time plus his site time. So two, on a four-hour trip, he's two hours on-site and two hours behind the windshield. So we're paying, yeah, roughly 400 to 500, $450, we'll say, per trip.
I'm just surprised that this started in July. Why weren't we informed of some of this issues as this was happening instead of...
Well, the reason, the reason I wouldn't have informed you of Beck coming more often is we're not under contract with Beck, so I had no idea how Beck was getting paid.
And you're thinking RDG just underbudgeded what the cost would be with Beck. They came in less than what it should be.
And they're, they're saying that Beck had to be on-site excessive over their estimation because of soil conditions.
But we have a contract for him to engineer this. Is that above and beyond that scope?
Because of the soil. Is that what we're saying? Because of the soil problem?
Who contacts Beck to get up here to see? I mean, is that the contractor's that?
Typical chain of command would be contractor would get ahold of architect, and then architect would then get ahold of Beck. Now, with some of the civil stuff, when we were dealing just, so, okay, we knew we had a problem with the parking lot soils, there were times where Brad and I spoke just personally and maybe set up a meeting to do it, because having Mike Bell from RDG drive up, who's an architect, is not going to do us any good. His input in that, in that situation is not going to be beneficial to the project. So there were times when I spoke with Brad or met with Brad upon my request.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons I brought up earlier, working through Brad, and I'm not saying that I would have approved it anyways, but we went from $76,000 to 16.
Because we're watching.
Because we're watching and we made appropriate changes, instead of just throwing the whole toolbox at it right away like they originally proposed.
So originally, this, even though the $5,000, because of the cost saving there, we're still ahead?
One, one could argue that. And I'm not arguing that we need to pay more money, I'm just saying...
No, I'm just, I get the soil problem. We didn't realize that was going to be there. RDG didn't, didn't plan for that. Yeah, it kind of is a bummer that it's been starting since July, we're just not hearing about it.
And then moving forward with the concrete, if, if the architect does not have in his budget for the civil engineer to be on-site to check grade forms and, and do some efficiencies and, and concrete testing at the beginning of the project, well, then I'm not very comfortable with that, because there's no civil project we would ever, no street project we would ever do without some level of inspection from the engineer. And currently, we wouldn't be getting any, I guess, if we chose not to approve.
So right now, we're $5,280 that we need to get caught up with, with Beck, and up to 3,500 is what they're guestimating? It could go up to for the next few weeks?
On what I have here, that's based on six to seven more trips at $480 a crack.
Right.
Which, to me, the best thing to do then would be just call that 3,500 and not to exceed, and if they only make two or three trips, we pay them, you know, we just pay them time and material.
By the time they come up. Right, right.
And I don't want to see them inflating that because it's time and materials. I mean, we've got somewhat of an idea what we're looking at here in terms of...
Right, well, you've got his hourly rate right there.
$120 bucks an hour.
Right.
Okay.
Can we go through just, Beck could not go through the...
And I would, yeah, that would be the other thing, that we didn't deal with him directly, because that's the two options that he has in his letter.
I would actually prefer that and think it'd be better, we'd be better off that way.
I think we'd better off going through...
And Mike may appreciate that also, instead of being...
Then you don't have to amend his contract.
Right.
You don't have a middleman.
So option two would be RDG request Beck to invoice us directly to pay them for the 5280 and then the additional not to exceed 3,500, depending on how many more times he has to come up here between a couple days ago through the 30th. Is that what we're thinking?
Yeah, not to exceed bigger, 3,500, and we would pay them on a time and materials basis or hourly, you know, not really materials, time and...
Right, just an hourly basis.
An hourly basis, yeah. All right. So it'd be option two, get an invoice from Beck, and then bill us for the times he comes up, based on his hourly.
So how many more engineering amendments are we going to have?
And this is up through the 30th, so this is up through next Friday.
So...
I thought there was some engineering already part of that total bid and everything.
So all the structural, I think all the structural and mechanical engineering is all through RDG's office. The only thing they subbed outside of their house is the civil.
Okay.
And I would, I would hope that we're getting far enough along now. I mean, we're through the soil. Soil's can be a problem for us in a lot of projects. I would hope that we're starting to reduce our liability of other stuff coming up, because we're, we're 25 feet in the air, you know, we've got walls up, we've got footings poured, we've got some of that stuff taken care of that I think would have caused issue. I would not be surprised, though, you know, with what they got laid out in the parking lot now, that we have some additional cost in getting the paving the rest of the way up to the building. For instance, I think it might make sense to just put GeoGrid under all that effective immediately when it gets poured. Now, that won't get poured until next year. That might be an additional change coming down the road. Not necessarily engineering, Brad, but...
Sure.
But if we had to put Geo under the rest of it, likely the little bit we have to finish, we're going to have to put Geo under it.
Right. In Mike's letter, he says, "Our contract with the city identifies monthly site visits." So that, it sounds, I'm reading that as saying, interpreting that as saying, "The engineer comes once a month," because it doesn't say bi-monthly, it doesn't say weekly. So, you know, he's kind, he's got it in there once a month as per visit, and he's made already 12s. So...
And this challenging soil conditions has required much more observations and coordination time than originally contracted for. Whoops. Talk with my hands, I'll sit on them again. Okay. So then, do we want to go with option two? Does someone already make a motion?
I'll make that a motion, that we go with option two, but then part B of option two, that we do it on an hourly basis with an amount not to exceed the 3,500.
Okay. All right, is there a second?
Yes. Second.
We're good? Any other discussion, comments, questions?
I'll just say that I am learning very quickly that working with an architect is completely different than working with a civil engineer. And I had no clue how much difference that is, but it's a lot.
Difference, like architects more...
Let's just say they, they have a different thought process and they go about things differently than what I'm accustomed to.
Sure, I can imagine. And that would be Mike, right? Mike Bell?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just as an aside, I had occasion a couple of weeks ago, or a week or so ago, had a
a kind of a mini-class reunion with about ten people, and they all commented on the, asking me what that building was that was going up. It is being noticed.
Good.
It's looking good. Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Hamel?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
Before we move on, I wanted to, somewhat relates to this, and Todd and I had this conversation earlier, but we don't have the city manager in place right now, and so Todd is making some of these on-site decisions that need to be, you know, made on a relatively rapid response. Do we want to, and this is not something we have to answer today, but something we need to consider, that we set a limit, he could spend up to X amount, whether it's five thousand or ten thousand or fifty thousand, without having to come back to council all the time, give him that authorization? Or do we want to be managing this thing all the way along?
Well, we talked about that at our last meeting when we gave them approval to be the signers, as long as things fall within the budget of day-to-day, but.
Right, within budget, but now we've got this type of stuff.
Probably more what he's getting at there is, I'll use the tiles as an example. We need to do something to the parking lot. The first step we did was tile. That was an additional seven thousand dollars for the job.
Okay.
I didn't want to wait two weeks for a council meeting, so I made a field order and said, "Put the tile in," because I think that's what's best for the city and we need to go there. But then we put the tile in, and that didn't solve it. So, now where are we at? Well, the next step is GeoGrid. Okay, when can we get GeoGrid? Well, it can be here tomorrow if we have approval. Well, it's ten thousand dollars to put GeoGrid in, so I said, "Put the GeoGrid in." So, what Brad's, or what Greg I think is alluding to is.
How much do we need to spend?
Is that okay?
What was the restriction on Scott, Mayor? What would be the restriction on a city manager?
There probably wasn't one, but I mean, it came, we had this discussion today based on what's happened so far. Do we need to put limits on it or?
If we try to micromanage too much, this project's going to drag out.
Trust has come along just, he just came to us now to talk about costs. I think Todd knows if something major comes up, he's going to have to talk to us, and it's going to have to come before us.
In Todd's defense, I would say he's well capable of making those decisions, maybe even more so as far as some of the civil engineering and working with engineers is what Scott was. He does it on a day-to-day basis.
We discussed this today, too, and I do trust him as well.
Right.
But there is some comfort in having a boundary as well.
But maybe that boundary ought to apply to the city manager, too.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay.
I guess I assumed there was one.
So, it's just something to think about, I guess, at this point. We're just, you know, we don't.
Food for thought.
We don't even make a decision, but.
I'll give you an example, and I could verify this tomorrow because I have Lewis and Clark tomorrow.
Oh, boy.
I think Troy Larson can approve any change order up to, say, like twenty-five thousand dollars without board approval. And I'm not saying you need to make it twenty-five thousand. I'm just saying I think that's an example of where they put a boundary. You're like, okay, in an effort to keep construction moving on our projects, Troy, you can approve up to twenty-five thousand, but if it's greater than that, you may not approve it without a board meeting, which in some cases then may require special meetings and stuff in an effort to keep projects moving.
I guess I assume that there was something like that in place.
There's not, but I'm.
I think it's something we should consider down, I mean.
Right. And I think we can think about that, and if we need to, we'll bring it to our next council, but we'll consider that also as we're going through our process for the next city manager.
I think it just makes it a little easier down the road.
I don't know if the state provides guidelines or anything.
Instead of finger pointing and saying, "You should or you shouldn't have," and, you know, we both have an agreement and understand.
It's mutual protection.
Yes.
Exactly. Cover your.
And it helps the employee and it helps the council.
Right.
And having a special meeting can be done.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Just for clarification on that, are you talking about like just projects like this or are you talking about like budgeted items? You're not talking about that, are you?
No, projects like this.
Where something can arise.
Within the contract, it's not, it's with these extras that pop up after the fact that the soil's not right or this is wrong and this has to be changed and.
Basically approving field change orders.
Yes.
In an effort to keep construction.
Yeah.
And we've got a lot of that coming down the road.
I would anticipate.
So, it's maybe something we should consider.
I think so.
But it needs to be, it needs to be helpful, not.
Right.
It needs to be helpful for everyone.
We have to set it out there far enough that he can do his job, but not so far that.
So, that's something to consider.
He's hung out to dry.
For now, let's.
Right. We can bring that back, and, although I trust you're going to come to us if something major comes up, but.
I don't know what the number is, but in the meantime, if something got big enough, I would just say, oh, I need to talk to somebody.
Thank you.
All right.
And thank you, Greg. We will, we'll think about that and see about maybe putting it on our next one, next agenda. We did a roll call, right, on that?
Yep.
Okay. So, number eight is considering the closeout of the joint sports complex with the school. We have the spreadsheet before us of what has and has not been paid by the city, by the schools. What is left in our balance on our part is forty-nine thousand, seven twenty and ten cents. Is that correct?
Yes.
Does mine kind of wash out?
Yep.
Good. Okay. Do you have any questions regarding the spreadsheet that is before you?
What was the initial, I wasn't on council in this, what was the initial bid of the sports complex for fifty-fifty?
Is that, what was the total bid or initial? It was fifty-fifty?
Yeah, what was Sheldon's?
Oh, gosh. I'd have to pull that out.
For some reason, five hundred thousand sticks in my head, but I don't know if that's right.
Each.
Each, right.
I thought total project was a little over a million dollars.
Right.
But I'm going off memory. I'm not a hundred percent sure of that.
And is this what we've paid to date or is that with this amount?
This is what we've paid.
So, to date, we've paid five hundred forty-three thousand, twenty-five dollars and forty-one cents. With this additional forty-nine thousand, seven twenty to close us out, would bring our half to five hundred ninety-two thousand, seven forty-five, fifty-one, and I think that's just a little bit over from where we had thought it would be. Just a little over a million. But I, Randy, I'd have to check.
Which we can, we can. I can go back in the minutes.
We're not, it's not a large amount over, but I believe we're right in that ballpark. Pun intended. Thank you. I still have my T-shirt, and I want to play, I want to play a game there, and so does Ange.
She's our gun.
What's that?
She's our gun.
Yeah. So, this will finalize us out. By paying this is done deal. We will have our half paid, the school have their half paid.
Just on a note, then, the only thing.
Going forward.
That we're splitting is the water and the electricity with the school.
Yep, the city bills the school for half the monthly expense of water, and the school bills the city for half the electricity expense twice a year.
And the mowing.
Yes, I'm sorry, the mowing. Yes, we do split them, Van Madron with them, yes.
Who gets invoice for that? Do they or do we, or does Van Madron just split it between us both?
Van Madron sends those bills to the school.
Oh, okay.
I'll make the motion to approve that pay estimate, or closeout, I should say.
Mm-hmm.
It's a great facility. It looks nice.
It's great to see it used, and the draw that it has, it's very nice. Looks good out there. Any other comments regarding the joint sports complex?
I got off the wall, whatever happened to that soccer tournament that was supposed to be held there? They were going to be a big soccer tournament this year.
I have no idea about soccer tournament, do you?
Yeah.
I've seen a big soccer, practice in games.
Oh, yeah, no, they were going to have a tournament this fall.
I don't know. Have you heard anything?
I don't know that it was this fall. I think it was actually going to be this spring, but we didn't get enough teams to register to hold the tournament.
Oh, I didn't know about that.
There was an adult tournament going to be held out there.
Yeah, that's what I thought they.
Yeah, and I think they had a caterer lined up to do something, but.
An adult league?
An adult tournament, yeah.
Tournament that came out of town, teams come in.
Yeah, I hear, I thought you said adult tournament, but kids tournament?
No.
It is adult tournament.
Some there was.
That would have been nice, yeah. Maybe in the future. Okay. Now, roll call?
Yes. Hamel?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
Last comments, any comments going around? Lyle, you got anything? I have talked to you about something. Todd, you got anything more since you got your mic on and you're there?
I wrote myself a note, but I can't read it, so no.
Well, you keep looking. Council, do you have anything? All right, Kurt does have something he'd like to share.
Real quick, I just want to update you based off the conversation that, or the presentation